Good evening, we're going to open the meeting. Opening meeting law statement. This meeting is being televised live on cable channel nine and being taped by a PBD Access TV, also being recorded by a city council stenographer. I'd like it at this time to open it up to our Chief Griffin.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Griffin, I'm the chief here in the City of PBD. Good evening. Can you hear me now? I just wanted to make a special presentation. We have a gentleman here, Mr. David Anisi from Linfield. We had an event that happened about a year ago right on one of the overpasses by Sonic Hot Dog where a motor vehicle had gone off the side of the road and was in a ditch up against the embankment. Mr. Anisi happened to be driving by. Several people stopped, he stopped, he got out of his car. A number of people were taking video of the actual scene. Mr. Anisi asked if anybody was in the car. He was told there was a guy in the car and actually the guy was having difficulty getting out of the car, was an older gentleman. Mr. Anisi went down to where the car was, he noticed that it had actually started to catch on fire. So he climbed over the car to get to the side door, smashed the window open with his elbow, unbuckled the gentleman because he couldn't, he was having a hard time himself understanding what was going on. Pulled the gentleman out and within another minute or two, the whole car actually engulfed in flame. And if it had not been for Mr. Anisi, that gentleman probably would not have survived that accident. So I felt it was a very special occasion to bring him in front of the council and present him with this plaque in recognition of his bravery. And this is presented to David Anisi by the City of PBD for his bravery and courage with his actions on 12/11/16 by pulling a man from a burning car and saving his life. And it's presented by myself and may have been in court. So, thank you very much, Mr. Anisi.
At this time, I'd like to stand for a moment of silence. Silence, and also, Mr. Anisi will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Move for approval, the recommended president. Any polls? It's a vote. Move to hearings four A. Counselor Turco.
Give me one second to give you the date. I believe it's, that hearing is, request of Attorney Kelty continued until February 22nd, Tim, if I'm not mistaken. And I will find that.
Ah, yes. He has a letter on the agenda, eight, eight, eight F.
Mr. President, move to receive item eight F under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
And, Mr. President, move to continue the public hearing, excuse me, to move the public hearing till the date requested, the 22nd of February.
All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Uh, there are no reported committees.
No. Hey, so there's no reports of committees, so we'll move to motions, orders, resolutions. Counselor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request the Public Services that they repair a damaged stop sign and pole at the end of Ann Drive. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Nothing further, thanks.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive item seven A. And I would move, if there's no objection from the council, since these are all reappointments, I would, I would move to dispense with the reading of the list and approve these various appointments from his honor, the mayor. You'd like it read? No, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Gravel. Welcome back, by the way, we missed your wit. So, I would just draw the council's attention to a couple of positions on here. The third individual listed, Gary Buah, this is a reappointment to the Community Development Authority. And I realize I'm making a compound motion here, but I would also move under suspension of the rules to receive item eight L. So moved. And you'll note that Mr. Buah is also listed on eight L as a, an appointee to the Community Development Authority by the city council. So, under the, under the Massachusetts legislation that dictates the membership of this authority, two members are appointed by the mayor and two members are appointed by the city council. So I just wanted to correct item seven A to remove Gary Buah there because it's, it's properly, his appointment is properly identified on item eight L. And Mr. Feinstein, I believe that should be a one-year term to expire, 12/31/2018. And then the last edit that I would request is on the second page, about halfway down, Mr. Richard St. Pierre to the Community Preservation. He is not an alternate member, he is a, he is a voting member of the, of the Community Preservation Committee. So with those edits, I would move to approve these reappointments from his honor, the mayor, and the communication dated January 9th, 2018. So moved.
Any, any questions?
So on Mr. Feinstein's appointment, it's, you want to change it to a one-year term?
Correct. I believe that is the proper term for that authority. I verified that against the legislation earlier today.
All in favor?
As submitted.
As submitted, all in favor?
And changed.
And changed. Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, on that item eight L that we just received a moment ago, I would move to approve those reappointments as submitted by the city council to the Community Development Authority. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive item eight H and set up a public hearing. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive item eight J and approve all papers being in order. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item nine B and set up a public hearing. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And under suspension of the rules, bear with me. Move to receive item eight K and refer to Legal Affairs. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive nine C and seek approval of the use of the Wigan Auditorium for the PBD Education Foundation Legacy Award. So moved. Thank you.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
No further motions, sir.
Counselor Sasslaw.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of, suspension of rules, I'd like to receive, make a motion to receive item eight E.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
And also, under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item eight M. And this was the request from Counselor Sinowitz that we, that the mayor looked into, sent to the PATV, Public Access TV, the feasibility of television, excuse me, of televising, the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings. And it looks like they are fine with the ZBA meetings because the Zoning Board of Appeal meetings are covered here. But the only issue with the Planning Board was that those meetings were being held in the lower level conference room, and that is not set up to be recorded. But if they were to move those meetings to the council chambers here in the Wigan Auditorium, they'd be happy to accommodate that request. So I would actually probably just ask the city clerk, Tim, you know, you know the meeting dates of the month better than anybody. Is there a conflict for them to come up here and meet on the day and the time that they normally meet on?
Planning Board meets the first and third Thursday, counselor. So those are, those are the off Thursdays of us.
Okay.
So generally, there wouldn't be a conflict with the Wigan unless there was some other event going on. So, but that would be up to the Planning Board if they want to move their meeting up here.
Okay.
From, you know, from the lower level.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, I'd like to make a motion to, that this memo be passed along to the Planning Board, forwarded to them, and like to hear their, their comments and their thoughts on it. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
No further motions. Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, Tim, I hear that we fixed the acoustics. Did you do it yourself?
I wish I could say yes, but no. I did not.
But it's, but it's been taken care of. It sounds great, so.
The company Signet came back and they made some adjustments. There was a, up on the rack, I know, now I broke it again, no. Up on the rack, there was something turned off at the last meeting, so no one, I don't know how that happened, but nobody should really be up there fiddling with that because everything is all preset. But, so, I think right now, everything sounds good, so.
It does. So now we can all hear each other, and I know it's, it's, it sounds great on cable television too. So, thank you very much, Tim, for taking care of that. Let's see, I would like to, over the weekend, I got a lot of calls, and I know that Counselor Turco, I've talked to him about this in the past, and he's received calls and complaints about this as well. An abundance of rat sighting out in Ward One. So I've, over the weekend, and Sharon Cameron is great, I mean, she takes calls over the weekend, so she's already working on this issue. But what I'd like to do is schedule a Human Services meeting, if I could, at some point, Tim, to have Sharon Cameron of the Health Department come in and explain to folks what is going on and to educate the public of what we can do and why this is happening. And again, she's already working on it, she's great, so I expect her to get back to the council pretty quickly already to tell us the status of the situation that's going on with that. So if I could schedule a Public Services meeting with that agenda item, that would be great. Thank you. I'm sorry, excuse me, Human Services, yeah.
Counselor Turco.
Through you to Counselor Manning. On the motion, if you wouldn't mind adding the city's contracted pest service, which I believe we use A-1 exterminators, that has been working with Sharon Cameron on that, and maybe we could request that they come to that Human Services meeting also?
Sure, I would do that. I, I think Sharon Cameron is assessing the situation this week, and by Friday, she's going to know whether to contact those folks to send them out. So if she gets to that point, then absolutely we'll have her report out on it or invite them along as well. Good suggestion. Thank you. If I could just have a status update on the request for the trash contract for the councilors, Tim?
I do have that in a PDF. I received it this week from Dan Doucette, so I could forward that out to all councilors. Now, I'm headed, I'm headed to the February 8th.
All right, great.
Meeting that, that, you know, Counselor Gould has scheduled.
Excellent. If you could get those out to us at your earliest convenience prior to that meeting. I know a lot of councilors, including myself, are getting a lot of calls on the contract and, as Counselor Turco brought up at our last meeting. So if we could get that to review so that we can help educate the public of any changes, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ozino.
And no motions.
Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight B.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item eight E and refer it to the special permit hearing for 795 Jubilee Drive on the 22nd.
Which, Counselor?
Mr. President, it's eight C from William Paul, it's Public Services Department.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive item eight D from Glenn Herrera from PMLP regarding streetlight requests.
All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
And, Mr. President, regarding, and through you to Counselor McGinn, actually through you to the entire council, I know, Peter, you received this already, the letter from Roy Simos, which was item eight K regarding city-owned land on Rockway, that's coming up in Legal Affairs shortly, and I just want the council to be aware that that is a very contentious issue. And if anybody would like information on that, I believe that you have, you have, the request is, you know, if anybody would like to look further into that, you may want to. Both parties have retained counsel, and it should be a very interesting meeting, to say the least, but you may want to at least take a ride by Rockway and take a look at that, how that, those two houses are set up and why there is legal issue from both Mr. President, move to have Public Services request that PMLP place an additional street fix, streetlight fixture on the existing pole across from number 55 Granite Road.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to request a cost estimate from Public Services. This is a co-motion with Counselor Gould for replacing the existing traffic signals at St. Anne's Church and Tilly's Farm with newer units with a strobe similar to the one in front of the Brown School.
Hear the motion. Any, all in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
And, Mr. President, last but not least, in regarding the 795 Jubilee Drive special permit hearing, there was a request by Counselor Sinowitz for the, or may have been Counselor Manning, for the minutes from the CDA meeting, the Community Development Authority. After Counselor Sinowitz sent out that request, it was brought to my attention that there are no minutes from that meeting. I would request that we have, I don't know if this would be through the mayor's office, that we have a clerk or somebody record the minutes from those meetings so that we can refer back to them, because at this point, I have nothing from that meeting on any of the discussion of that day. And, Tim, maybe you can help me with that. Would that be through the mayor to request that we assign a clerk to that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's through, that would be to the mayor.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. For my fellow councils, I'm sure you saw the article maybe a couple weeks back regarding the doubling of PBD's poverty level based off the data from the last census. And since Counselor Manning has scheduled a Human Services Committee, I'd like to refer that to that committee for further discussion. I think it does warrant further discussion. It's kind of a dramatic increase with the economic climate that we're in as well. And to discuss further, to see if any, if that information and that data is being evaluated at the city level, to isolate which groups are being affected. Is it a location in the city? Is it a demographic, age demographic issue, so that we can better address it? I know there's a lot of work going on right now with private organizations that are coming up with their, with solutions and to see how we can maybe aid them through that information. So I'd like to refer that to the Human Services Committee.
If I may, the school department may have some data and some information, especially since they deal with the free lunches and, and issues that come up throughout the day and there. You may want to reach out and ask for someone from the school department to be there, the business agent, just a matter of something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I pulled some of the info, I pulled a lot of the last minutes from regarding that, and I think that would be helpful, but it's specific to the poverty increase is something I really, I think it's important for us to isolate and figure out what's going on there. But yes, I appreciate that, and we can definitely go down that road.
Hear the motion. All in favor? It's a vote. Counselor Gravel, welcome back.
I'm not sure of procedures, I've been gone a long time, no. This is like being on the other side of the world, literally. Not used to seeing you from this side. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item seven B and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
I'd also like to make a co-motion with Counselor Turco. I'm sure he's received the same number of complaints that I've received because, and I'm sure that maybe even Counselor Manning Martin has received them as well. There's been an increase in the truck traffic on Bartholomew Street in violation of the requirements that we set against the postings because of lack of enforcement, and also several complaints about speeding, not just in that area, but, you know, I think we should start by targeting that area. I think on a number of occasions, we said, you know, having, you know, rules and laws in place are great, but if nobody enforces them, they're, they're useless. And so I'd like to have the chief of police and the, and maybe Captain Richards, prepare an assessment of how well the enforcement is going there, which they would be able to show us with the number of ticketed vehicles that they've gotten on, on the Bartholomew Street, and also provide us with some insight as to how we can better monitor and enforce, particularly the changed speeding laws within the, within the city, which are now supposed to be 25 miles per hour unless posted otherwise. So I'd like to get a report back from them. So moved.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
And then a request to ask the mayor to look into the possibility of providing the city council with their own email addresses from the city so that we can, as we receive emails from our constituency, they come and can be in one place. Most of us, you have to be, have to give our business or our personal email address. I, for one, would just like to have a city council address so that people know that they can get ahold of me at that particular address. It also, I think, would help with the communication between the councils so we don't have to try to remember everybody's unique email address. And with that request, I'd also like some consideration for the establishment of a city council portal. And by having a portal, the packages that we, that I currently receive electronically, that others could, could receive electronically, would not have to come via email and be downloaded, they would be on that portal, which would also add the added advantage of having that nice new screen that we put up there. Those could be on display, and you could eliminate the need for all of the extra packets being produced, which would save us a lot of money in paper. So moved.
Great motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would you, would you be available to give a tutorial about the use of the portal, please? Absolutely.
Hear the motion? Oh.
I'm sorry, just a quick question for Counselor Gravel, through you, Mr. President. I know our state email address is through the Port Authority, we can't put them on our personal phones. Do you know if the city of, Tim, maybe you know this, or Dave, maybe you already know, can we put city email addresses on our regular phones to receive emails through, through there?
My understanding is you can.
Thank you.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Further motions.
I have no further motions. Do you, can I have a motion to receive eight A?
Move to receive item eight A under suspension of the rules.
This is regular rules. Eight G?
Mr. President, move to receive item eight G and set up a public hearing.
Don't know, vote? Don't need a vote? All, all in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive item eight I and set up a public hearing.
You hear the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Have a motion except nine A?
Move to approve taxi cab license transfer, Sunshine Car Services LLC, 153 Newbury Street, license number 35. All papers being in order. So moved.
Do we have one nine B, transfer? Do we take that already?
You, you have to vote the motion.
I'm sorry.
You have to vote the motion.
I'm sorry. Heard the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote. Nine D, Counselor Gravel.
Nine D, Taxi Limousine Driver's License, Leon Ward, license number 48. Anderson Bachelor, license 51. Andrew Arnello, Arnello, license 52. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote. Would you like to take it home for the rest of the way?
General license, nine E, general licenses renewals for 2018. Inholders license Hampton Inn, Boston, PBD, 59 Newbury Street. Entertainment license Italian-American Citizens Club, 7 Blaney Ave. Lodging house licenses, Northfield Properties DBA to Main Street. Downtown PBD LLC to Main Street. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
Hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Nine F is utility contractors license. Jay Whiting, Contracting Inc., 3 Murray Hill Lane, Endover, Mass. Robell Inc., 72 Page Street, Lindenberg, Mass. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
The motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we, we missed- I think we missed nine C, use of the Wigan Auditorium by the PBD Education Foundation on May 17. Did you already do that? Okay. Thank you.
Brings us to 10 unfinished business from the receiving meetings. You know the order. It's, it's adjourned? Motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn. Land speed record.
That's it. [laughing].